Okay. Call me in order. Six P M. You took photo, so that's why we're a little bit late. Everybody's in attendance, let's stand and. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic of Mr. Sanders, one nation, indivi- individual. Usually have any changes. Paying motion to approve the meeting agenda. Brenda, you have a second?
I'll second.
By ready. Any discussion on the agenda? No discussion, all those favor approving the agenda, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Agenda carries. For Board of Education Superintendent Evaluation. Have a summary for that. So we're just gonna read the summary on the evaluation. It's not the business side. Mr. Corf meets board expectations in many areas for the first year super tenancy. This past year has been challenging due to COVID nineteen, but it was evident to the board that positive relationships have been built. Areas to focus on including teaching and learning curriculum and aligning standards, continuing to build community relationships, it's prioritizing to increase enrollment. Our district has been resilient in leadership changes, our staff have been very patient. Over the last few years, and we look forward to our district's bright future with our staff, leadership team in the community, and especially the students who serve. Summer. As you remember, we wanted to close session. Took over the evaluation from the last. So. Now, opportunity for visitors to address the board. Whether you're on Zoom or through email, I want to address the board. Okay, here, nobody wanting to address the board, we're gonna move on. Once you do the acknowledgement.
Yeah. Thank you to the school board, school board members for your leadership and support and school year. And like to say, Christians and bus company and drivers, thank them for for safe transportation, for everything they did, all the changes they made and. Masks to the. Hand sanitizer, things like that. It was hard work and great attitude, so we appreciate good work. Very flexible.
Okay, we will move on, we'll start with administrative reports first. Mr. Martinez will be up with finance report. Port of script. Right, let me begin up for everyone. Overall, pretty good month. Quiet, it's the end, the end of the fiscal year, so essentially, quantum tuning, we're just. Cleaning the books, starting getting ready for audit, which you guys will approve the audit ditch letter here. Recent items. And all we're doing is a lot of clean up, making sure we follow up with Minnesota statutes and other MBE regulations for how we need to close our books. I'll start with investments, we started our investments with one point two million dollars, we received the last final payment for fiscal year twenty one from MBE. The amount of five hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. And we ended up, our main investment account with five million. Our open trust account, that's where we pay our retirees, we paid them a significant amount of of the benefit. My understanding is there is no other retiree that qualifies for that benefit in the master agreement, so we'll. Try to sunset it eventually. And you see that that particular transaction here, we started that open trust account with sixty four thousand, we withdrew sixty. And literally all there is left is thirty five hundred dollars, and a lot of that is pretty much interest of accumulations of over years, so. I'll meet with a Bailey at the beginning of August and determine what to do with us, interest, whether it's we pretty much with drive. And then we give it to the general fund, in which we'll need the board to approve, or what do we do with that particular money? So that's all we have, at the end of the month, we had, at the end of the month, and at the end of the year, fiscal year, we. We closed the year with four point six million dollars in total investments. Really as much as deposits for the remainder of just regular deposits throughout the month, there really wasn't any. If anything. Really, there's. A lot of activity. Payables came out to four hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars, and payroll came a little bit higher at four hundred and nine thousand. And the reason why this is a little higher than your normal months is because at the end of the fiscal year, we do what we call a payout. So anybody that's in their contract has the ability to cash out a personal base, they go ahead and use it, so that's what you see there. At the end, we had cash on hand of seven hundred and sixty six thousand dollars, certain activity accounts. We pretty much, the majority you see here is that covered for prom in the class of. The class of twenty twenty one, so that brought the balance for certain activity counts to one hundred and eighty seven thousand. Go to the collateral report. We have substantial collateral. That backs up our checking account. Three point one, three point one million dollars in pledge lateral, so we have plenty of room. Where anything that covers our Minnesota National, you'll see a journal entry that I coded here. Essentially, that journal entry is just to finalize cleaning up the books. You guys heard about basic skills and all the different codes that that we had to implement. MBE got in a little bit of trouble because they had an audit by a third party organization and. They got into a little bit of trouble because. They weren't, they weren't capturing enough data on how basic scale monies are being spent, and essentially, basic skills covers. Many interventions in addition to the L and a few other things, so essentially, what ended up happening is we had to create over two hundred additional budget codes. To show more data as to where those dollars are going, so this is the first one, just like to show you guys an example of what it is. But if you look at my actual books, there's significant amount more, so in the past, we only had, we only had to report through building. With the new budget codes, it's literally for everything, whether it's a ESL teacher, whether it's remedial mathematics, remedial reading. Whatever it is, so it got very, very detailed. And that's what I've been spending my, my time a lot, because they, the auditors said that that's the first thing they're gonna check with, so I just wanted to give you guys. An idea of what that looks like. Then the last pages are our payables throughout the month. You guys are gonna start to see a little bit of a change in how we do our payables, and that is, wires and ACHs are starting to be a little bit. Popular in our business world now. Which in our, in my end, makes things a lot more efficient. But there's no printing checks at the end of every single month, just automatically post from our account, and it's easier for me to reconcile the bank statements at the end of the month. So we're starting to work with our accounting organization, Region One, and with a lot of our vendors to make sure that we introduce. Those BCHs, automatic clearinghouse payments, and wires, it's way more efficient, and you're gonna be able to see and recognize those here. By the type of payment that they have, other than that, like I mentioned, it's a pretty standard month when it comes to payables. That is what I have for the treasurer's report, and just the other thing that I talked about is. Start our audit the first week in August, and. Better than doing it during the month when kids come back, so hopefully we get our audited financials for November this year. And we can have a audited understanding of where we live here. Questions?
What can we do to spend down some of the student activity accounts, let's see some. What's that grand spent for prom?
Yep.
Is there smaller stuff that we can start? I know. I know that account gets funds from. They're dedicated, specific to. Trips, right?
Yep, sixth grade trip.
Is that it, just a sixth grade trip?
And spiders then?
And I think I asked the question before, maybe half of that is associated with those types of fundraisers? Does that seem accurate? Those fundraisers for band choir? What's the other one, I'm sorry. So if there was ten thousand dollars for band, is that then a subcategory of that student activity account? So what, you know, let's say there's fifty percent of that that's available, that's not really specifically tied to any sort of. X activity?
Okay.
What are some ideas? So maybe this is a question for. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Corf, or anybody, I guess. Or is that one higher, is that balance higher than typical in light of the pandemic?
No, it's actually been pretty stable, we were actually a little bit scared that balance might potentially take a dip because. We didn't have as many fundraisers as we here, so a hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars in student activity accounts is pretty healthy. In comparison to other districts, I don't know, to be, to be honest, that would be for us to take a look at. But one of the things that with certain activity accounts, we can't control is the needs of that particular activity, so. I'll use Bellbury's, for example, yeah, Bellbury's put a significant amount in in fundraising, and one of the. And I talked about this over two years, so we had guests before, which is the new accounting article, the government's student activity accounts. In order for certain activity accounts to be classified in this particular set of books, it has to be money fundraised by students, for students. And they follow their own structure on how to even account for asking a check to pay a bill. And there is certain criteria that have to be met, and we have a guidance for how that goes. When we have monies available to spend, it is to that coach or to that advisor. To say how we wanna spend those dollars that will benefit the entire whole of that activity, not particular to one individual. We use, we use, it's rare that you have a surplus of funds for for an activity that dismantles or simply dissolves, it's very rare. The funds that get used there. Are are used by that particular graded activity to its fullest, and whether ever there is a residual balance. It just goes on for the activity as a whole for the upcoming classes, so, for example, baseball this year. They had a fundraiser, and the money went in there, but it helped pay for team gear, and they have a reserve in there, and graduating senior sweat nubbed by the. The money that they fundraise stays there for the classes to come through. So what, what's the process that advisor or coach has followed? Five for funds, yeah, so the first thing they gotta do is they need to connect with the business office to follow our procurement process to make sure that, one. We know that it's within budget, and two, that we know that they're doing business with a vendor that we can do business with. And then after that, they come in, they eat with me, so I can tell them exactly where their balance is, so they could start planning for that particular purchase that they need. Once they get it going. They talk to a vendor, the vendor sends me the quote, I issue a approved purchase order on behalf of the district, goes back to the vendor. Gets approved by the vendor and starts processing, material gets delivered, we verify the packing slip, make sure everything comes through from the packing slip. Then we go ahead and then we ask that advisor to complete a check request form that includes a student of a signature in addition to the advisor. Then approval from the finance director, then we cut a check. All that documentation, which is for four way. Or way of accuracy in any accounting method, gets documented for the business office, for the auditors.
Do you say that the student activity fund.
Gets used as much as. Uh, I should. I don't know the question to that, one of the great things of the certain activity it comes to, that they're very fiscally responsible in the sense that they buy what they need and not what they want. So they're very good about purchasing items that they know that they'll use for the season or something, that it's been very taken advantage of, that they need to replace. Some type of.
But, you know, I've talked about this balance before. And I get the need versus the want, but I mean, there's money available. I, my hope is, I'm assuming all the coaches and advisors understand the protocols necessary to be able to utilize it. Account is available, sometimes it's kind of nice, you know, to get some of those wants, you know, if there's, you know, we're here to try to make the experience as good as we can. And I get that there's a certain threshold that we don't wanna cross in terms of wants or needs, but. I just hope that that's, the advisors and coaches are kind of well versed on that, and that if there is a couple bells or whistles every once in a while, that really could. You know, just generate some additional. Opportunities.
Yeah, no, we definitely do, Mr. Nelson does a very good job at the beginning of the year to talk to coaches about their fiscal responsibility, and the other thing you need to account for is that. In addition to the money that they fundraise, the district also provides some supplies budget, so. The processes, a lot of the coaches and advisors use the district budget first before they touch the fundraising.
Thanks, Rudy.
That's all I got for you guys, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, a few items here, fall planning, we started with fall planning, new staff workshop will be August twenty fourth through the twenty sixth, so we turn on new. New teachers, and then we'll have district staff workshop, August thirtieth to September second. Item that we have to, what if you want to continue with the staff campaign, which usually is on Monday, of staff, district staff workshop. That's usually at six P M. All news, want to continue. Ready to connect with the staff? We'll put that on the schedule, okay? Um, big thing coming into this school year is the mental health piece, and right now, and that's for staff and for students, working with. Our counselor, our school counselor, and our counselor with LSS. Coming up with a plan of how to address our concerns for students and staff. It will be a focus, a district workshop, we will have a speaker, and it will be on the Tuesday morning, it'll be all morning, a speaker coming in from the top twenty. Out of St. Cloud, and dealing with. Addressing mental wellness for all staff, and hopefully that will help the staff and also help us. Help students. Teaching and learning model, we're being, started with meetings, we had a COVID meeting here, a week or two ago, we started discussions on what the school year will look like. And we'll have Mrs. Lenis here soon talk about COVID items there, so. Right now, our plan is to be in person, that's our discussion analysis, be in person, and to, if there's anyone with concerns. Related to COVID, then we would work with them individually, with principal and COVID coordinator to address their concerns, and we would meet with them, so. And what we're looking at right now is July. There's a few weeks before school starts, so a lot of things can change between now and then. Open house, we'll have an open house, elementary's gonna do a little bit different this year, they're gonna have the teachers individually, meet with parents, students, so they're setting up a schedule on that, Mr. Nelson, I'm sure that. We'll have open house again at the high school, that'll be on that Wednesday, and we'll have that evening. Also during open house, we have seventh grade orientation and ninth grade orientation, and we'll start to communicate those items here in the next week or two. District priorities and goals for this coming year, if you wanna take a look at our district priorities, district goals, and over the next couple of weeks. Ponder them, we'll talk about them at our August work session. Technology items, we'll talk about that here shortly, Mr. Simmons will share, give us an update on student devices and teacher devices of the high school. Few staff development items, technology training in August, we're starting to plan that, what we're going to offer staff to help them get ready for the school year. Curriculum development at the high school, we're working with our PE health department and our social studies departments on curriculums, they'll be meeting with Mr. Christiansen. And then I talked about the mental wellness piece. Marketing team has been busy, worked really hard over the last few weeks to develop a brochure, a brochure that you have in front of you. Very nicely done, and if you look through it, it kind of starts, we, they use the thing like the voyage, where they started with the elementary, and then to high school. To the future, so and then on the backside is activities, but what they're trying to do is hit all the highlights of why Pelican Rapids, why Viking Elementary, why Pelican High School. Different pictures to help with the information that is provided. Right now, our marketing team is discussing how we can put this on social media, and taking tidbits from each, you know, from the elementary to the high school activities. And then put it on social media over the next two weeks. Our goal here is to educate and share. What a great school with everyone in our district, so this brochure will, every resident, and then to the surrounding areas that's around our district. Any questions with the brochure, marketing? Okay, Steve testing. Right now, we will be, next couple of weeks, be receiving our MCA results, and we'll be evaluating them, and then that workshop, we'll have our staff. Look at them and analyze our test scores and make adjustments in our curriculum. School board meetings and work sessions. Sheet that I shared with you, the regular meetings and then the work sessions, and you can see, we kind of listed some. Maybe possible conflicts of activities that are going on, we do not have band and choir concerts scheduled yet. Over the next few weeks, we'll get them scheduled, and then we'll add them, what we're trying to do is avoid any conflicts produced, so you can. Take your child's activities, and yeah, we can keep on working on. Meetings and work sessions, so. Any discussion with. Dates, times. Right now, we're lying a second, I think that's. Email, I need to call this by a second. Work session at six P M. Your topic for a second right now would be the plans for twenty one, twenty two school year, we talked about protocols, COVID, learning model. Also, we would talk about the four day, five day. Analyzing the forty five day timeline. So those two items we talked about. So November first. So I believe we can approve these tonight, but if we need to make any changes, maybe we can tackle that a second. Over these days, we need to change. Let's go back to, I just, couple upcoming events, July twenty fourth, this coming Saturday is the OMP. All my pineapple golf tournament, first golf course at two P M, August second is the school board work session, August fifth, just remind us, the NSBA summer seminar. I will be attending that from eight to twenty o'clock, August sixteenth, all sports will start, August twenty fourth through twenty sixth, new teacher workshop, August thirtieth through September second, it's district staff workshop. And then September seventh is the first day of school. So let's talk about technology first, that's gonna be more technical, so.
Well. Couple months ago, I brought one of these in, this is. Was a demo at that time, but we had. I, we've got five hundred of these now for students, so grades seven, twelve, all get a Windows laptop. These will replace those blue ones that we had before. And the staff computers just came in. For all the staffs in the high school, and a few at the elementary, or anybody at the office that will get. A new Windows computer, and that's what they look like there. Don't match the Macs that are over there. So. Anybody wants to take a look at it, consider. Anybody have any questions, oh, one other thing. These devices are here, and we're also gonna redo wifi throughout the building, all the devices that we have are beyond. Support. And our switches, so the. Devices that everything connects to in the closets is, are all being replaced to the, what's gonna be on their service date, so. Anybody have any other questions about technology? Still, I'm still working on imaging, getting ready for staff and students. Hopefully, I'll have that done. Before everybody comes back.
Go.
Oh, installation of all those devices in the ceiling and closets are next, start next week.
Hello, everyone, here we are, COVID time again, anyway, just a few things, you wanna go over, in the fall, unless something drastic happens. There will be nothing mandated, no requirements, it will be all based on local, community, and school district driven, so. And as time gets closer. So and as time gets closer, we'll have to go through that. As far as protocols go, protocols haven't changed at all. They're all the same, quarantines are the same. Decision tree is the same and it's a reportable municipal disease. So everyone has to report it, everyone has to be tracked. So none of that'll change from, it'll be the same as last year. Vaccines, we're just encouraging vaccines, you know, for twelve and over. If you are fully vaccinated, two weeks out from your second vaccination, you are not considered a close contact. So if you were with somebody close, you would not have to quarantine. And then we just wanted to try and be as proactive as we can. With that, face mask will still be required on buses. That is on the federal government requirements for public transportation. So. On a bus, they will still be required to wear masks. Yes, even if they're vaccinated. Yes, yes. And then the M D H CDC is encouraging anyone that's not fully vaccinated to wear masks. And that's just encouragement. It's not a mandated requirement. Okay, um, and like I talked about, we still need to report COVID cases. We go back to vaccines. We have. Otterville County Public Health has been great and working with us. Last Thursday, they had a clinic at the library. They will be back again on August fifth and then again on August twenty sixth to offer that. So we will try and get a fire together and just send that out. So the community is aware of it.
Do you know what kind of numbers you had, but they had?
Yeah, I actually just went worth today and they had seventeen that were registered because usually, you know, they'll put up a thing and that's how they register, but they ended up with thirty one. So that was the best turnout they've had in a while. Usually she said it's just a handful. Thirty one was great. And M D E is not planning on having a safe learning plan like last year. We won't have that safe learning plan. And since the executive order expired, M D E no longer has authority to create and enforce COVID mandates. So it will all be locally community driven as far as what that will be. M D H guidance, we're hoping within, you know, the next couple of weeks, we don't know what the guideline will be when the guidance will come out. But Otterville County fifty five percent are vaccinated and eighteen and over is seventy percent. So Minnesota as a whole state is seventy percent. So they did make it to the seventy percent. Positivity rate, of course, we have to realize that there's a lot of them not being tested at this time, but it's very low at one point three. Percent, which is great. And our county cases, they will go according to zip code, which is right on the M D H site. And then we went up five since May twenty seven. So we've had a really low rate. So, but we will have Otterville County Public Health helping us just like last year. I will be here at the high school and then we will have Gwen at the elementary again this year. Questions, concerns?
Things will change several times.
Things will change. It will be ever evolving change. Yep, yep. And I'm guessing in the next couple of weeks, you know, the M D H will start putting up one guidance once August comes. So. Yeah, thank you.
Let's move on to consent items. Consent items, item A, approve board meeting events, June the seventh, two thousand twenty one, special meeting and June twenty first, two thousand twenty one, regular meeting. Free financial claims and June bills. Item C, treasures report. Item B, accept donations to the LC League Scholarship Fund. Norman and Vicki Strong, fifty dollars in memory of Duane Strong. Scholarship fund, Susan and Andrew Goldie, twenty dollars in memory of Thomas Johnson. The scholarship fund, Gerald Gloria Will, twenty five dollars in memory of Beatrice Nelson. Viking Elementary School to the milk program, central. Event, the old Goodyear Church, one hundred dollars from noisy operating mission. I don't mean personnel, there are several of them here. So approve the resignation of Doug Ruggiman as head boys golf coach and junior high. Boys and girls basketball coach. Pro resignation of John Mo as assistant cross country coach. Pro the resignation of Kim Nelson as junior high volleyball, volleyball coach. Pro the resignation of Val Schultz as title one teacher. Pro resignation of Jeannie Burns as Viking Elementary School paraprofessional. Hire Madison Oswald as junior high volleyball coach. Hire Andy Johnson as junior high boys basketball coach. Hire Logan Nor as cross country assistant coach and junior high girls basketball coach. And head boys golf coach. Hire Eli Beechey as head football coach. Hire Cody Schaefer as assistant football coach. Hire Hayden Stewartman as assistant football coach. Hire Chris Hacker as assistant football coach. Hire Cole Witzig as junior high football coach and head wrestling coach. Hire John Mo as head boys track coach. Hire Laura Janczewski as head girls cross country coach. Hire Gabriel Frederickson as title one teacher at Christian Elementary. Medically for right now, I'll bust Erickson from July twenty eighth, two thousand twenty one to September eighth, two thousand twenty one. Item F is approve the MOU. And item G is approve the audit engagement letter with I Bailey for the two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty one audits. So I'm gonna take a motion for the consent items. You just like first. The MOU. MOU is for teacher, Mr. Schaefer, to teach introverted education, trying to grow our own. Teachers here that I've been interested. This is the avenue that we're using to do that. And Mr. Schaefer wants to teach the class and. Only way to make it work and schedule it is to have him teach it during his prep hour, so. Just reminder, teachers at the high school have a sixty minute prep. Sixty minute prep with MOU with say that it's or agreeing that he will be teaching during his prep hour. Also, funding for this is part of A and I, our generation money, and that's what we use to cover. This piece right here, this hour. So entertain a motion to approve the consent items. Any discussion on the consent items? Discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent items, signify by saying aye. Aye, let's post aye. Consent items carry. Around the business items, I may approve. P R H S, P E teacher, point one four, full time equipment. Background on that. Yep, so we added two sections of elementary school. So now the P teacher has to cover two classes for P E, so that would equal an hour. So to cover all our physical education, key twelve, we need an additional hour. Which would mean if this was approved, this would. Teach an additional hour at the elementary school.
And one thing to that, that's so Mr. Meester will cover the date, program. Get all. Oh, everyone serviced there.
She's the only one that's licensed. That's adaptive.
P R H S part of the business items that should have been.
Well. Wait, we're shifting it. This even said would be the teacher who's at the high school, should go over to the tree. But yeah, we could have switched it to. I'll entertain a motion to approve the P R H S, V E S, P E teacher. And you want to turn it just like I.
As you described it.
Sounds good. We have a second. A second then. Now any discussion on the P R H S, V E S, point one four. P E teacher. No discussion, all those in favor of approving it, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. And make carries. Pro the school board work session scheduled for this year twenty one and twenty two. That's what we have in front of us.
You know, we approve this. But we. All we did is actually have them. See Billy, is there some requirement that we have to do if we don't have anyone here? It seemed like nothing I'm aware of. The month before will cancel. Sessions. I. I'd like to see less work sessions. Looks to me as close to almost monthly, right? From. Couple months skip there throughout the school year, but. Unless somebody get up, must the board. Jordan, I guess, the board feels like. That particularly, I, I'd like to see that scale back a little bit.
Should we have?
So when we cancel, there's what sort of notice is required? Certain notice requirements that have to be met. It's not. Just get, there's a get posted where.
On the school website.
And that's the only place it needs to be posted.
The offices, regular office.
I think historically, we've. Known the month before. They don't have work sessions for the sake of having. Time is valuable for everybody, so. So if we didn't have a schedule, we'd still be able to, if there was no work session scheduled, if. For tonight, for example, if we knew that we needed a work schedule or a work session in August, we'd be able to schedule one at that point. Instead, rather than that, I mean, it's, it's at our discretion anyways. This way by, you know, we're locked in. Maybe the notice requirements, you know, I guess, you still have to post it on the computer and do the other postings on the building. It takes time. But just connecting the dots in order to get there takes time too. Is it something that would be more efficient if we. Had an issue that came up at a school meeting and said, hey, that's a big idea to discuss, maybe have a work session next month, could we handle that? That way.
Think in the past when we tried to do something similar, we had, everybody's had conflicts. So at least now something's scheduled. Instead of just going around the room and saying what works for everybody.
It's easier to just instead of date or. Send out the survey. Ever works for everybody.
So at least now it's, it's here. Are we, are we set in stone on the, it has to be the third Monday or Friday for the regular school board meeting? For like, I'm looking at October eighteenth, there seems to be quite a bit going on. And since pretty much everybody. Here has kids, I was just wondering, that would be something that we could look at to, you know, maybe have in the morning that day or. Move it to a different day, is that possible or no? There's no school that day scheduled, correct?
There is a term here.
Cause I'm thinking, just by looking at it like four, five. Have kids at the play that day. Kind of have to go to every game, but if there was any way to change it, if it's not, if it has to be the third Monday, then we stick with it.
Used to do it a third Tuesday. Remember when I started. Or was it always the second? It was October twenty fifth, so. Could be a playoff volleyball game. Is that a plan?
Correct. It would be the first, yeah.
It's morning adoption.
I know in bounds.
What's the best chance if we look at?
My kids ready for school. But that's me.
That's too late.
For me, probably a bit earlier, the bar.
We could keep it consistent with what is here and then. In their work session or next meeting, decide whether it will not go.
Send out like a two or four or something.
We'll kind of like that too, instead of Mr. Nelson. Or the week before the eleventh, it's only J B football. By Donald Scotty. Which could work because there is a.
Just long this day or a little. So that's something, sorry.
So the work sessions are up for this next business item and then. The regular meetings will be in the designations. So does anybody want to make a motion on that work session schedule as we have it?
Make a motion to approve the work session schedule.
Wait, Brenda, do we have a second? Second language. Additional discussion on the work session schedule. On the website. Well, work session, yeah. This calendar or.
It's only on the board documents and then it's approved that I put on the schedule.
Okay, any discussion? There are no discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same, motion carries. I M C approved the two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two designation. And that is on the website. Report meeting. Go over session individual one or. Sorry, do you want me to read this?
What you could highlight.
So I'll just kind of read them off here. Designations for two thousand twenty one, twenty two, most of these will. It's a carbon copy of last year, but doesn't need Pelican Rapids Press, it's the official newspaper. Designate Wells Fargo Bank, Minnesota National Bank, Bell Bank. Yes, so we're to just liquid ass. Asset fund plus, cell bank, PMA financial network, depositories of all school money for a period of one year, beginning first day of July, two thousand twenty one. And I said deposit service secured by bond or collateral security acquired by law. Designate Brian Corf, forty Martinez, Emily Evanson. Be authorized to make transfers from saving accounts to activity accounts to invest school money. Designate the vest of deal located in the district office of the high school, vest of deal located by the principal's office in the elementary as location for posting all official board meeting notices. Designate the monthly meeting date and time, current is, uh, work sessions are first Monday, six P M, regular meeting, third Monday, six P M. Opposed is work session first Monday at six P M to be held as needed, restrict, excuse me, regular meeting, third Monday at six P M. Designate Brian Corf in the school board chair to be authorized to consult with law firms as necessary. Designate rate for driver's education to be set at two hundred eighty dollars, the current rate is two hundred eighty dollars. Some be following admission prices for athletic events for two thousand twenty one, two thousand twenty two, student activity ticket thirty five dollars. General student admission, three dollars, general adult admission, seven dollars, senior citizen pass, no charge, about sixty and over. Adult fall season ticket, twenty five dollars, adult winter season ticket, fifty dollars. Mileage rate and meal reimbursement. Her mileage rate, personnel using a personal vehicle for school visit, the school owned vehicles not available, the current I R S rate and twenty cents a mile. The school owned vehicle is available and declined by the employee, the meal reimbursement rate, twenty degrees of liquidity is ten dollars for breakfast, ten dollars for lunch and twenty dollars for supper. Reimbursed per meal, not a lump sum provided, if detailed, item actually seen is provided. Set salary for board members and recording secretary, the current salary for board members and recording secretary is seventy five dollars per meeting. So the salary for board, to the chair and clerk. Salary is three hundred dollars per year for chairman and one hundred for clerk. And then we have. Daily rate for certified teachers for substitutes and non-certified substitutes, one hundred twenty five dollars per day for certified teachers. Non-certified subs, thirty dollars an hour, this rate will set negotiations. And proposal is the same, meal prices. That's a lot to read, so it's a same question. Anything we need to address on that or? We consider. The wave fees for people sixteen years and above. I'd really like to see our students be able to attend their class meets events.
So I think that was one of the incentives that we were.
Yep, so they complete their forms. This one, they turn it in on time by the deadline that's given to them, they'll get a free. Those kids of the families will get a free ticket passes. They'll get to turn it before on time. And if you don't, you got to pay a fee. Can we just wave it all together?
There's no incentive.
Oh, I get it, I understand that. I mean, is there a way, another way to satisfy that? So I've been sitting in finance training. Yeah. And free produce forms are very important right now because this coming year, this past year, this coming year, lunch and breakfast have been free, so people now enter into the free produce ones. Will you give money for that when they turn them in and they qualify? You get money from the state and we need that money. This is one way it's set up that we're using to collect those forms. So how is that information done? How is that information shared?
Yeah, I was just asking, that's all kind of been sent out here.
No, that's, we're working on it right now, so next week we'll get everything sent out. In all our platforms, let's say we have a strategy meeting to start a little bit of this media. Put in all of our platforms, Facebook, you name it, or start reaching out to all of our students, parents, fans.
Probably something also that if the teachers in the elementary especially are meeting with the families, one on one. Before school starts, that'd be a good time to help and fill it out if they need help and just collect it right there.
Is this something that we turn somebody away for inability to pay? No, there was actually a Minnesota statute that no longer, no school can turn down a student for a hot lunch regardless of their lunch account balance. So that's in statute, uh, because of the incident that happened in Richfield. Yeah, but activities. All activities. We are so warm to our students that when they get, get done with practice and like walking to the gym. No, I go and send them up.
Well, I mean, I know we're warm. But I mean, it depends on who's. Who's doing the admission, man, it could be different people, I know there's usually the same group of people who are very warm, but. It is, yeah. I like the idea with regard to the incentive, if it's extremely important, that that's a great idea. At some point, I'd just like to see.
If we get an update, percentage of forms filled out. Yes. Yep, so October four, October first, even a couple of weeks before, uh, Mr. Corf and I and Emily and his Berdor should be able to pull a report together. The four of us worked together on computing the numbers, make sure all our certain data is up to date, so we'll know exactly where we are at. How many forms additionally we need or if we. Uh, so yes, we'll have that information deadline to collect the forms the first week after work.
Your goal is a hundred percent forms, right?
A hundred percent forms.
Right, I mean, whatever family regardless of.
Yeah.
I think that needs to be emphasized too, that every family needs to fill one out, I think a lot of people just think it doesn't pertain to them, but. Whether you, I mean, you know, you don't qualify, you still need to fill it out.
It also will be a part of the online registration platform that's new this year. So in that sense, Greg, every student should be able to get two activities for free if they do the paperwork.
Yeah, they don't have to qualify, they just have to.
So maybe when I get a report, that there'd be a trigger to. Yep, absolutely. Everything else look okay with anybody?
So the student general admission is basically for all the time.
Local students. Entertained and watch approve the designations. We have a second. Second by Molly. Now any discussions on the designations as we've discussed and listed. Here you know discussion, all those in favor of approving designation, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Here's. Item B, approve the annual update of the following policies. Policy four ten, family medical policy. Or thirteen, harassment and violence policy. Or fourteen, mandated reporting of child direct physical or sexual abuse. Or fifteen, mandated reporting of malt treatment of vulnerable adults. By fourteen, bullying prevention policy. Five twenty two, student sex nondiscrimination policy. By twenty four, internet acceptable use, acceptable use and safety policy. And eight zero six, crisis management policy.
No changes, can please.
No changes.
I made a motion to approve the annual update of the following policies. Four ten, four thirteen, four fourteen, four fifteen, five fourteen, five twenty two, five twenty four, and eight of six as listed.
Okay, we have motion, I read that, we have a second. Miami. We do have to do for a second reading to anything like that or if there's no change. All right. Any discussion on the policies? No discussion, all those in favor of approving the policies as stated, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Policies are approved. Notice, right? Item ten, upcoming meetings, we have work session August second. And we will be discussing. Here's something else. Discussing the full day. Forty weeks, time for. Guessing we're going to see some COVID. Movement from the state. See, a regular meeting Monday, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty one. And now we're going to be moving to negotiations, closed meeting. So in Minnesota statutes thirteen, David point zero three, closed meetings for labor negotiation strategy. Government body of a public employer, made by a majority of one in a public meeting, decide that will they close meeting to consider strategies for labor negotiations. Including the big negotiations strategies are developed in our discussions and review of labor negotiating proposals conducted for some section. One seven nine eight point zero one to one seven nine eight point two five. Of the. Somebody can make the motion that.
Make the motions here, moving to closing for negotiation strategy and then following immediately will adjourn.
I will second. Any discussion on closing the meeting for negotiations? Here's the discussion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, aye, those opposed, same. He closed and then adjourned.